It is seven o'clock, despite the clock on the wall being a little bit slow. Okay, good evening, everybody, councillors, members of the public sitting here and anyone watching on our live stream. Welcome to, this is actually our July summer full council meeting, although it feels like we're back in March somehow outside, but thanks very much for coming along. We start with questions from the public and councillors, so do we have questions? Right, so the only questions we have are from you, Jeremy, but I know you've got three, so you're making up for everybody else. Yeah, could you, would you mind, I appreciate you sending the questions in earlier today, as you've got three, do you mind reading all three and then I can respond to all three? Thanks.
Thank you very much. By the way, is this going out onto? It is, okay. So, on item nine, the play strategy, in general, I welcome the aims and aspirations for play in Bradford in appendix A, but what does reflecting the climate and ecological emergencies mean? With summer heatwaves becoming normal, can the play areas please be densely planted with shade trees and other vegetation which are fun to play in and also draw down CO2? Both this item and item eight on the St Margaret's Hall roof raise larger questions about procurement in a climate emergency. So my second question is, your climate and ecological emergency strategy committed you to delivering specific new instructions to your suppliers, has that happened? Where are they available to view, please? Your climate strategy said that four percent of the 2019-20 budget would be spent on environmental projects, sorry, spent on environmental projects was not enough. I quote, "This level of spending does not equate to prioritising the ecological and climate emergency. The council will therefore look to allocate no less than ten percent of its budget to items and projects directly addressing the joint emergencies." So my third question is, is that allocation of at least ten percent happening now in this year's budget and what percentage of the play area's budget have you earmarked for climate mitigation and adaptation and biodiversity?
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. So reflecting the climate and ecological emergencies means that, as we've previously stated, a response to the emergencies runs through, or is a thread through our policies, our approaches as a council generally, so that's policy, priorities, procurement, information, communications. In terms of features that will be in the renovated play parks, in part that will come out of the consultations with users and residents, but it's certainly our intention to include trees so that there's plenty of shade. I'm not sure about your definition of densely planted in the actual play area because obviously there's got to be space for the equipment and the children, but our tree planting programme already has included fruit trees at or near many of the play parks, and Porton in particular, which is the first one where we'll be working on, has already seen quite a lot of tree planting, but definitely the need for shade is important if people to spend time there and enjoy it, so certainly we take that on board. And in fact, as regards Porton, we've engaged a landscaping specialist to help us look holistically at the whole site, because it is a special site, so as regards the ecological management of it and so that things are well balanced. In terms of procurement, when we undertake any procurement exercise process, we do ask for, and this applies to the play parks contractors, we ask them all for information about their environmental processes and policies, their ethical policies and practices, their procurement policies, so they are sent a long list of information we want in advance the play providers so that then that could be assessed as part of the process. Obviously, it can vary from different project to different projects, but certainly that was the case with the procurement for the play areas. I mean, as you're aware, that comes up a bit later on the agenda, so there will be a bit more about it then, but the company recommended is committed to minimising pollution, waste, environmental risk, to using recycled materials where possible, timber from suppliers, committed to sustainable forestry and so on. And obviously, then there's the long-term durability of a product that's critical as well, because that's part of the balance, isn't it, how soon you might have to replace something. In terms of what proportion of the budget is spent on environmental projects, I can't give you a precise figure now, in the course of the afternoon since we've had this, I can't do that, but our budget as a council is around 1.3 million. In the last financial year, we spent 100,000 on tree planting. Add to that the 30,000 we contributed towards the traffic modelling, which is addressing priorities on pedestrian safety and air quality, so certainly those are addressing the climate emergency insofar as improving cleaner forms of transport around the town. Then there was the living green wall, purchase of machinery to manage our green spaces, and then our power supplies on a green tariff, so there's all of that as well. An ongoing project this year is replacing the old litter bins with new ones, many of which include a recycling section. The maintenance of the green walls and ongoing costs, higher fees for our electric vehicles are ongoing, and every year we support environmental projects, so for example, recently the biodiversity projects at Christchurch. So I think we have more than met the 10% figure last year, and I hope we would in the coming year, but in that policy that set that out, it was set out as something that the council said it would look at, I don't think necessarily commit to in a formulaic way. Fundamentally, I think the council has over a number of years sought to embed an environmental approach in everything we do across the council, and a measurement based on expenditure isn't necessarily the best way of judging it, especially as you'd have to define what counted. So the speed indicator device we bought recently, would you count that or not? It's going to reduce speed, it makes things safer for pedestrians, possibly, possibly you would count that, possibly you wouldn't. And then, of course, a lot of what we're doing that's most effective, and perhaps particularly so people have noticed at the moment, is spending less money, so our approach to the grass cutting is to leave a lot more to grow wild. Well, that's a fantastic contribution to our local ecology and biodiversity, and doesn't, you know, it costs us less money to do that, because we're not spending, as we might have done so much of our staff time on grass cutting. Then our solar panels are contributing to National Grid, then there's the work of the Environment Committee chaired by Alex and the Sustainable Travel Committee chaired by Tim. Sometimes it's projects, but a lot of it is about promoting projects, ideas and so on that help people as residents or organisations with their own projects and purchases. So I think it was, it's a good aspiration, but I also think that as addressing those emergencies becomes a way of life for a council, being precise about a figure to spend money on isn't necessarily the most helpful way, but maybe that's something we should discuss, and I can see Simon's got a comment.
I just wanted to add, and it won't be any consolation, because you can never spend enough money on these things, I think, but you should also bear in mind that the money that we're spending on this comes out of what is left of the disposable bit of the budget. So much of our budget is pre-committed in terms of salaries and pensions and other expenditure that we have, so where we have the option to spend, 200,000 would actually be really quite a significant amount, but it was never enough, I know.
Thanks, Simon, that's helpful. And of course, some of the staff time is spent working on precisely those sorts of projects. Very quickly, but would you stand at the mic, please? Thank you.
Sorry if I missed it, but the procurement policy?
So when we ask contractors to bid to take on a project such as the play parks, we ask them for information about their environment policies.
About their policy, but what about your own policy? I mean, where can I view your climate and ecological emergency procurement policy?
It varies depending on what the item is that's being procured.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that we agreed, though, as a council, that every time we procure anything, we go to the greenest option that's appropriate for that project, and of course, there's such a wide range of things, Jeremy. I think that we did vote on that, and there will be a motion somewhere back in the full councils when we approve that, that said how we would move forward, and that's exactly what Katie's described with respect to the play parks. So we do demand that they have a suitable level. Okay. What's that? Retiling the roof, because you don't want your building falling down and leaking and ruining everything, so that's another.
Thanks, Alex, that's helpful. Great. Are there any other questions from anybody? No? Okay, so coming on to apologies, sorry, Kate, oh, Dave, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, just something which has come up across social media recently, and it's getting quite heated, and this is, I'm sorry to raise it this way, but it is the subject of dog mess and how that gets cleared up, policed. The big issue at the moment appears to be whether you can or you can't walk your dogs through Victory Field and suchlike, and whether you can if you put them on a lead. I don't think putting a dog on a lead stops it from depositing various things. I just wanted to raise whether we need to debate this in one of the other subcommittees or, you know, whether it's a matter for officers and how we can perhaps, I think it'd be Wiltshire Council who would police this, but I don't know for sure, but, sorry, do we discuss it in?
Well, I can certainly answer the questions as far as I can. In terms of walking dogs on Victory Field, I saw that Facebook post as well, and I know the officers replied to the person who said she checked with the office and let people know, to say that no dogs on Victory Field means no dogs not even being walked through on a lead. The only exception might be if an organisation like the Food Festival rent the entire field from us, and then if they allow dogs, then they allow dogs. I don't know that they do, but if they did, but then they would have to ensure that the field was completely clean when they returned it to us. I mean, years ago, councils used to have dog wardens, I don't think Wiltshire Council affords that sort of thing anymore, and as regards collection of dog waste, it is what's expected of dog owners, isn't it? Alex, you may have something to add.
I think this does speak to the discussions that we've had about what should and shouldn't happen on these supposed assets that we now look after, and it might be good to make that very clear, where you should and you shouldn't, and obviously, every good dog owner will indeed pick up their dog mess, but obviously, there's a few that don't. But what I was going to say, as far as the dog mess picking up, I believe as councillors, should we so desire, we could get training from Wiltshire Council at a cost, and then we'd be able to fine people if we actually caught them in the act of leaving dog poo. Now, I don't think any councillor probably is very keen on doing that, but I'm just saying that is what they have divested, the dog warden kind of role, I think. Kate?
I just think that there should maybe be some areas that we say that that just aren't dogs walked, because even if you pick up a dog mess, that doesn't mean that there's not going to be remains left behind, and I think it's nice for parents to know that there are certain areas that are left clear and that there are, you know, therefore safe to leave a baby to crawl around, that if you're playing football and you fall over, that you're not likely to end up landing in, even the remains of dog mess, and it does seem kind of a bizarre thing to be discussing today, but there we go.
Should be all play areas, then?
I think it is within all the play areas where they're fenced off, that within that fenced area, that no dogs are allowed. It's slightly different where people are playing football, because that's a bigger space, but no, I think it was an interesting and topical issue to bring up, so thank you, Dave, for asking that question, and it's certainly something we could think of looking at more fully if we need to.
I'm looking forward to the minutes for the next meeting.
I'm sure Sarah will write it up beautifully. Are there any declarations? Oh, no, we haven't, have we done the apologies yet? No, we haven't, sorry, apologies from?
So far this evening, I think this is the full list now, apologies from councillor Vittles, councillor Blackwell, councillor Franklin and councillor Gibson.
Thank you. And any declarations of interest from anybody? No? So we come to the minutes of the last meeting on the 2nd of May. Is everybody happy with those? Could somebody propose to accept them? Thank you, Tim, do we have a second there? Alison, thank you. Those in favour? Thank you, so those minutes are carried. Any matters arising? I don't think we have any. Nope. So coming to chairs update, I won't read it in full, it was included in the agenda papers, which are also available on the website, but to pick out a few things, we had lots of fun at the beginning of this civic year in May with the coronation celebrations, and I think one way or another, lots of people in the town joined in, and coming on to the volunteer day on the Monday, which was also hit by the rain, it's given us the thought that we should try and do something for volunteers annually, partly to thank the splendid array of volunteers we have in the town, but also to have a focused way of recruiting new volunteers, because they really do underpin the community. I also attended the unveiling of the defibrillator at the Wiltshire Music Centre, which is also a really valuable part of our community, and of course, that's of use not just to those in the centre, it's placed outside the door, but to all those in the residents in the surrounding area, should it unfortunately be needed, and was part funded by the council. Other things just to pick out, with the music festival, the first time the town council has organised a music festival, so for a first year, it went very well, and we're particularly grateful to the musicians and volunteers who helped with that. Coming to the end of the report, mentioning the running out of time relay, so I really want to plug that taking place tomorrow, that's highlighting the fact that we're running out of time in terms of addressing the climate emergency, it's going all around the country, it's coming through from Bath tomorrow, making its way to Oxford, and so if you're interested in taking part or seeing what's going on, it should be here roughly between 12:30 and 1:30, being passed in a range of interesting ways through the town. The key place to be is probably the country park or around the Tithes Barn, is that right, Alex? Yeah. So that's going to be exciting. We also have coming up, I didn't have a chance to put in here, but just to publicise to anyone who might be interested, a business forum on the 18th of July that will be held in this building, St Margaret's Hall, between 4 and 7:30. So all councillors and all local businesses, self-employed workers, business owners are very welcome to come along and give their thoughts and views on what more the council could do to support businesses. And then a piece of relatively good news on the local plan, which was published yesterday by Wiltshire Council. We've waited a long time for this stage of the local plan, there was an earlier iteration of it, which drew lots of comments as regards sites identified for housing in Bradford, so as Tim's one of our Wiltshire councillors, I'm just going to ask him to fill us in a bit more.
Yeah, I would say it's pretty good news, really, because they've published a local plan for Wiltshire, but they've also, within that, they publish a plan for each of the towns as well, and in Bradford, there are no specific sites earmarked for housing developments, but there is a reserve, what they call a reserve site, and they've identified reserve sites in four towns around the county, and they've specified that the golf, the old golf course is a reserve site. Now, that will only come into play some years down the road if it looks like we're not going to achieve our target of 80 houses between now and 2038. So it will be some years before they can really judge whether that's going to happen, but we still have a target of 80 houses that we need to be building in small plots and infill locations around the town, and if we fall short on that, we might come back to the golf course. So, I mean, it was, there was a fantastic response to the consultation, I think there were something like 700 objections to the old golf course being included, so it was a sort of mighty effort by the town as a whole. And the other one that they did look at, and they go through four different phases of sifting these sites, and the other one that got to phase three before it was thrown out was the site off Cemetery Lane, but that was rejected in the end because it's on a back migration pathway, so that was actually just cut. So, you know, we are getting away relatively lightly in terms of new housing developments, but we will have to look for infill opportunities to get to 80, but if you think about it, 80 houses over 15 years, it's not that many, you're looking at, what, six or seven, six or seven a year, something like that.
Thanks for that, Tim. Yes, so moderately reassuring news, and definitely thanks to the effort made by people to make their views heard on that. Coming to item seven on the agenda, the town has a friendship link, it's not a formal twinning arrangement, but it's a friendship link with Tubass, which is a town in the west bank of Palestine. We're expecting a visit from them in October, which Penny and Judith are here from the Friends of Palestine group to tell us about, and of course, we're particularly mindful at the moment with the situation in that area, that it's a very challenging time, and we're obviously concerned for everyone involved. Penny, would you like to speak?
So, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Am I speaking into the thing or? Okay, that's simple, is it? So, yes. Hello? Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. So, yes, very kindly, the town agreed to the friendship link with Tubass in March 2020, in fact, the last council meeting before lockdown, so we feel very blessed about that. And we have developed the relationship since then, and as some of you will know, Judith and I went out in last September, September, to visit Tubass and had a marvellous reception, sort of official receptions from the mayor and councillors, and also we visited schools, a farm and lots of other activities. So now they are, we have invited them back, and Katie has invited them, and the council has invited them back, and they're coming, hopefully, as they would say, Insha'Allah, in October, and we have the mayor coming, and the teacher or retired headmaster, who has been our main contact since 2015, and a sports coach, a youth worker, and hopefully the person, the civil engineer, who will be working on the playground that we are, is supporting as our next project with Tubass, and a farmer, because when we went, we visited an enormous farm, and so we want to be able to return that and give him the opportunity to see how farming is done in the UK. And that's why we're really, and coming to the council and coming to anybody in Bradford Avon, because there's, as Judith has pointed out, both of us live in Bradford Avon, but our children and our grandchildren don't, so our limit, we're limited on the number of people we know, really, who can get us into contact with groups that would be of interest to the visitors from Tubass. So we're particularly concerned about contacts with farmers, as Simon knows, he's started to put us in contact with that, but the farming community, and having been the granddaughter and the sister of a farmer, I know they can be quite introverted, really, farmers, rather than outside, so getting to know farmers would be lovely, but also, as we don't have children and grandchildren in the area, schools, we've got contact with St Lawrence, but deepening those contacts, getting so that we have groups we can go and take them to see, and they're coming, hopefully, just before half term. So really, we're looking for the support that anybody can give for making that visit, which will be about a week long, a success, and I know you will be doing a reception for them, and we are very fortunate, we have the ambassador for Palestine, who was on the radio the other day in relation to the, or yesterday, in relation to the attacks on Jenin, the ambassador has said he is going to come, so that is great that we will have him for one day on the 19th of October, one evening. So we are looking for activities and things we can take them to, which will reciprocate the kind of activities that we took them to, but will extend not only their knowledge of what happens in and around Bradford Avon, but also give us the opportunity to find out more what happens in Tubass. And as Simon knows, I looked into hiring a minibus that we could use for that whole week to take, to collect them from the airport, bring them back, and then take them around. It's been a shock. I found I was too old. They will, you cannot hire a minibus over 70, so I'm really, it was a horrible shock. So we will be transporting them in our private cars, but that's again, another thing where we would like support in, if we, they're going to be a group of five or six visitors, and they'll be all interested in different things, some of them in youth and sport and others in farming, so we will be transporting different people at different times. So again, any support that you can give on offering transport would be very welcome, and we are also looking to accommodate them in, over that week. So some of us have already sort of said we can have two or three, one or two people, sorry, but anyone who's happy to offer accommodation, either for the whole week, or maybe we wouldn't want to have them moving around too much, but two or three nights that week, we would be very grateful, because also, hosting people gives you an opportunity to find out more about their lives and, you know, what are their difficulties, and of course, at the moment, we are seeing some terrible difficulties. Tubass is about 15 miles from Jenin, so if you've been hearing about Jenin, and as I wrote, it does seem to escape much of the aggression of the Israeli army and the soldiers, but it doesn't mean to say it is not touched, and they will all have family and friends in Jenin, and they will all be feeling very anxious about, all of the Tubass residents will be feeling very anxious about what is happening in Jenin. So anyway, I hope that has provided enough information, but I'm going to hand out these leaflets, and I think it points you to our email address, and if you have any further questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact us. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Penny, and to you, Judith, as well, for all your work to organise the visit.
It's BOA, Friends of Palestine, all one word, at gmail dot com.
Thank you, lovely. So if anyone feels they can help in any way, do get in touch. Thank you. So yes, more to hear about as we approach October, when the visit takes place. Coming to our next agenda item, this is St Margaret's Hall roof, so the building we're under at the moment, fortunately, despite the fact it's raining, we're not actually getting dripped on as we sit here, but the roof is leaking, and there are about 100 broken tiles on the north side of the roof, so work has to be done to address that. Is anyone going to? Tim, are you going to? Did you want to speak to this, Tim, or are you just here to answer questions? That would be lovely, if you want to come and just explain briefly what's been going on.
So basically, what's been going on is, over the winter, just where Matthew's sitting, I don't think he's got wet yet, we were finding a puddle of water on the floor, just where, in that corner there, and if you look at the ceiling, it's quite useful. And if you look at the ceiling, it's quite useful doing this here, because you can see where the paint's been peeling off the wall, and there's also a crack along that line underneath that light. And basically, when I went up in the roof, I found there was basically a broken tile up there and the water had come through. And then I did an interesting thing, I turned the lights off in the roof when I was up there, and there was quite a lot of daylight in various other places. So then I've had three different contractors come in to survey the roof and find out what was going on. And basically, when the hall was refurbished back in 2014, the decision was taken to use reclaimed tiles. And basically, those reclaimed tiles obviously have come off previous buildings and can be of various ages. And yeah, over the winter, the frost gets in there and has caused some of them to crack, slip, delaminate, so forth and so on, resulting in the situation we now find ourselves in. So yeah, the quote, the proposal was, I've got a quote from three different contractors, to retile using new tiles rather than reclaimed, to try and give us a bit of assurance of at least a 10-year warranty going forward, that we'll have a sound roof going forwards.
Thank you, Tim. Alex?
I talked with Ian about this, but I gather it's not a problem on the south side, so you won't have to disturb the solar panels?
There are a few on the south side, but it's nowhere near as bad as the north side. I think basically the solar panels have helped shelter it from frost and other bits of things.
Okay. Yeah, put that in the benefits of solar panels as well, I know. But that's quite lucky, really, isn't it? Because that could have been a huge extra job as well.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? No. So we're asked to approve the recommendation to appoint contractor one to carry out the work. Would somebody like to propose that? Alex, thank you very much. Second, Dave. Those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tim, for your work on that. We now come to item nine, which is about the renovation of our play parks. So since we've taken over these from Wiltshire Council, we've had a chance to survey them all, we've had a working party look at what's needed, and we've drawn up a plan to renovate them over time. So Chris, you've been working on this, do you want to speak your report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Casey. Sarah, could I have the next slide, please? So yes, most of the information is contained in slightly more detailed format in the report that accompanied the item. But we thought, because this is a very exciting, very important project for the town, and also one where we're investing a fairly significant sum, just catch people up with a few slides that I'll talk to and then happy to answer any questions as well. So in 2022, we took on responsibility for more play areas from Wiltshire Council. Not long after that, councils agreed to invest up to £370,000 in play across the town. That's happening across three phases over the next 15 years or so. Tonight's meeting, we're talking about phase one. We sent out a project brief to 12 play companies. And a couple of weeks ago, four companies returned their designs and ideas, plus supporting paperwork which relates to them as companies. They were reviewed by power and town council officers, and two companies were then interviewed by a combination of councillors and officers. So tonight's meeting, there is a recommendation to appoint a company to work with on the first phase of this project. Next slide, if you'd be... Thank you. So to remind people, the first phase of this project is going to be worth up to £175,000. It's happening over the next three years with Polton, Parkinson, Oldham's the most advanced. The figures shown up there are the likely budgets for the different play areas and play spaces. However, there may be a little flexibility within those, depending on how community conversations go and what we decide to do with each of those spaces. Next one. So as I said, the other week, we interviewed two prospective play companies. They put together some designs, but also a raft of supporting paperwork. And we felt that this was something that was important to reflect. These are some of the reasons why, as a panel, we're going to recommend working with Play Company B. It covers kind of not only the initial designs that they've put together, which reflect our project brief, but also their willingness and their passion for working with the community to carry those conversations on, so we can refine those designs over the summer. It also talks about how those companies work in terms of their policies and their practices, including their environmental policy. Sarah, if I could have the next one? Sorry, we can obviously duck back to slides if we need to for any questions. And then, obviously, depending on how the decision goes at tonight's meeting, next steps going forward are to take some initial designs for Polton, Parkinson, Oldham's out to the public, out to the town, to get feedback on those and perhaps tweak those over the summer. Hopefully, towards the end of the summer into autumn, we'll bring those back to committee meetings for formal approval, at which point we'll put times to actually when those play areas will see improvements happen. And working with George, our Community Engagement and Development Officer, we've already started conversations at Spencer's Orchard and we'll be starting them at Bearfield as well. And those conversations will start with finding out a little bit about how people use those spaces, what they'd like to see happen, and what we can do with the budgets for those. So yeah, that then brings us to the recommendation, which is to approve Play Company B, who were the highest scoring company through the interview process. But yeah, happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Chris. Simon?
Can I just ask, because this is where we all started with these, are there any of these play areas which are in danger of being taken out of commission in the meantime?
So there's already, there's a kind of climbing unit and slide up at Polton Park that we've had fenced off for most of the summer, because the surfacing underneath and the quality of that, we had concerns about that. I think if we weren't doing Polton first, then yes, we'd be moving towards that fairly swiftly. The others are all in...
Surfaceable.
They've had wear. They've had a lot of love and they've seen a lot of play. So the timing is right to do these things. But certainly, on balance, Polton is the one which is probably in the worst condition. But it's the reason that the decision was taken to move that one first, first and fastest.
Okay, good, because I don't think we want any of the process to get in the way of actually getting them done on time.
No, absolutely, because especially with the summer holidays, we know people want these areas. Kate?
Kind of less of a question and more of a statement, actually. First of all, I'd like to thank Chris and the various other councillors, sorry, council officers, for their time they've spent on this. I know Tim and yourself have spent a lot of time just on the proposals that got put out for the tendering process, let alone the rest of the work that's been done. I'm really glad to see the ambitious kind of scope that's included in these proposals, both in terms of inclusivity, creativity and sustainability. I love the references to places like the new Sydney Gardens in Bath, which I don't know if anybody's been to the Sydney Gardens playgrounds in Bath, but there's some really great and really exciting adventurous things over there. Like, I'm loving the kind of small football, is that the Panna Football, the kind of tiny mini football courts that they do, which I think are just great for families and the community. Also, the reference to Make Space for Girls, which is looking, I'm sure that most people are aware of Make Space for Girls and about how they've been looking at making parks and play areas much more accessible for girls and women who don't access these spaces enough because they don't feel included. I've spoken to Chris about maybe inviting, I think it's Susannah Walker and Imogen Clark, who are Froom-based, who have launched Make Space for Girls, they've been doing some amazing work in Leeds to do with, yeah, amazing kind of research projects and then activating projects to do with parks. Blah, 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 blah. Just looking at my notes, sorry. Referencing Jeremy's question about the climate, and thank you for always keeping us on our toes, Jeremy. I think that's something to remember when we're looking at Polton, that actually it's quite a barren space when it comes to biodiversity. And I think the tree planting work that we've done there already is really great, but I think any way that we can look at things like meadow, you know, kind of wildflower meadow strips and borders and extra planting, because actually, there's not much in the way of, yeah, kind of insect availability of plants there. And also, just as a last comment, the fact that we've got the Friends of Palestine here and they're talking about a playground in Tubas, maybe that there's something that we could look at for twinning our new and very exciting play park in Polton with that one in Tubas. And I know there's lots of fundraising that we need to do just for our space, but maybe as a kind of ongoing project, we could look at fundraising. Some link there, nothing to decide tonight, but I think that'd be something really lovely to do.
Okay. Thanks, Kate. Some really good ideas and thoughts there. No, no, very, very useful. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Would anyone like to propose the recommendation then, that we confirm our intention to work with Company B on phase one and delegate responsibility to the chief exec and town clerk to bring the final designs back to a future committee meeting? So that will be after the consultation with the community to really ensure we get what people want. Alex will propose and Kate will second. Thank you very much. And again, thank you to you, Chris, and all the team for your work on this. Sorry, and the vote, all in favour. Thank you. Great, that is definitely an exciting prospect to look forward to. Okay, so we now come to item 10 on the agenda, which is confidential business, which means that we have to close the public part of the meeting. Would somebody propose the motion to do that, please? Tim and then Kate, thank you. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending. Oh, sorry, and a vote in favour of doing that. Sorry, Alison, we're just voting on the motion to go into private business. Thank you.
Do I go onto the website to see the minutes of the meeting?